Good morning. Thank you for attending the special meeting of December 3, 2010 on Tuesday. We will begin with the invocation and flag salute led by Mr. Walter Colas with Christ Community Church.
Thank you Board for allowing me the privilege to open this meeting in prayer. I really appreciate that, appreciate your service, and I thank my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ for the opportunity. Heavenly Father, we just come on this day to the throne of grace, and we thank you that grace and truth was embodied in our Savior Jesus Christ. I thank you that you raise up people to serve you and to serve the community, serve the people under them, and I pray that they would do so with wisdom and with righteousness. I pray, God, that they would do what's right, not necessarily whether it's divisive or not, but whether it's right or not. You say that you would provide wisdom when we ask for it, and we do that today. We ask for all wisdom from above. I thank you for the Board, their commitment to serving, may you bless their service. I pray that they would always look above for their guidance, and I just pray these things in Jesus' name. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Walter Colas. Move on to item number two, the adoption of resolution honoring Vice President Mike Abadi for his four years as Director of the Imperial Irrigation District. First and a second, please vote.
Do you want to read the resolution?
I will read the resolution.
Read it and then we vote.
Honoring outgoing Director Michael Abadi. Whereas Michael Abadi was elected to the Imperial Irrigation District Board of Directors in June 2006, representing Division One, and was seated in December of the same year. And whereas Director Abadi has served the residents of Division One and the citizens of the Imperial Valley with distinction and determination throughout his term as an IID Board member, displaying a command and thorough understanding of the complex issues facing the district, its water users and energy repairs. And whereas Director Abadi proved to be a tireless advocate for energy reliability and regulatory compliance during his tenure on the IID Board, as well as acting as a careful steward of the district's irreplaceable water resources. And whereas Director Abadi has conducted himself with competence, cordiality, and consistency as a member of the IID Board, taking seriously his obligation to the district and the public that it serves. And whereas Director Abadi has opted not to seek reelection to the IID Board and will return to private life with the knowledge that through his efforts and those of his fellow Board members, the district is in a better position to keep the lights on and the water flowing and to serve the public interest. Now therefore be it resolved that the Imperial Irrigation District Board of Directors wishes to express its appreciation and gratitude to Director Michael Abadi for his unstinting contribution to the district and the public at large on this day of December 2010.
Director Sanchez, now we vote.
All right, move on to item number three. Director Abadi, do you have any few comments?
Before Director Abadi speaks, I'd like to present him with his parking space. I had some taken up for you, so you can have your own parking space. You were looking for it, weren't you?
Thank you Presidents Sanchez, Board members. First of all, I would like to thank Lord our God for all his many blessings bestowed on us and also the troops that are fighting over to protect our freedoms that we enjoy today to assemble. I'd like to thank this Board for working with you. It's been a real pleasure working on different issues, agree to disagree, agreed I think we moved the district forward. Would like to thank Mrs. Gloria Rivera, the Secretary to the Board, for all her hard work, and Sandy down there, the General Manager, General Counsel, Mr. Garber, management, staff, rank and file, want to thank you for all your hard work, those that are out there. Want to thank internal audits for all your hard work, Mr. Kaiser, Betty V., Craig, Francis. And the Board puts a lot of demands on you, but you've always performed. A few that aren't here anymore that I've had the pleasure of working with, but I would like to say thank you. If anybody knows how to get ahold of them, would you please pass on to Mr. Frank Barbera and Jesse Montano that Mike Abadi said thank you. Would like to thank the WCAB and the ECAC for the issues that they work out and help the Board with. I'd like to thank Mrs. Mayola, I think she's here, from CoLab and Veg Growers, and also Lindsey Dale from Farm Bureau. I'd like to thank my family and friends, to my mom and dad, I thank you very much for the spankings, I thank you for the teachings, making sure I got an education, and in the school of hard knocks, thanks for picking me up when I fell down. And I thank my brothers and sisters and their spouses for feeling in when I couldn't be there and for all their support throughout the past four years. Most of all, I'd like to thank my wife and my three children, Carrie, Michaela, Matthew and Mary. Come on. I thank you very much for your patience, your support, and your sacrifices. Love you. You know, I've had plenty of experiences throughout, it's been a learning experience all the way along and throughout, experiences here, our travels. First got on the Board, did quite a bit of traveling to Washington, there were some misnomers in Washington, some of the IID's darkest hours became some of its brighter moments. And it's been a pleasure of traveling to Washington, meeting with the representatives, Mrs. Mendoza, and working with the other Board members likewise with Director Hanks of Sacramento. Had plenty of meetings, two of my, that I recall, was Cal ISO, was interesting meeting, was called a barrier, giving a sack lunch and walked out, told to leave. Not so short time later, went to San Diego Gas and Electric in San Diego, and same story, we're not a Valley partner, give us a sack lunch to leave. So, you know, lessons learned looking back, if you're going to have lunch with Sanchez, eat a big breakfast, I mean Hanks, if you're going to eat a big breakfast. With that, I know this Board has a lot of work to do, so all those that work here at the district and all those that it serves. God bless and God speed, and thank you very much.
Thank you Director Hanks, I mean Director Abadi. I have number three, administrating of oath of office to newly elected Directors by Superior Court Judge Christopher Yeager.
I'd like to say just something on behalf of Mike Abadi. My name is Matthew Vogel, I'm an employee here at the IID. I'd like to thank Mr. Abadi for all that he's done for the IID and the people of this community. Last year when I attended my sister-in-law's graduation at San Diego State, I was reading the graduation program. I saw that there was a significant amount of scholarships that read Michael and Carrie Abadi. I know the Abadi's for a very long time. I asked Mrs. Abadi how this came about. She said that Michael had donated his earnings from the IID to scholarships and other donations. It takes a very big man to help out all these people. I, as a friend and as an employee, would like to thank Mr. Abadi for all his time and effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments for Director Abadi? Oscar.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name's Oscar Gonzalez. I want to thank Mr. Abadi for helping poor people, for looking out for the community, and for always going for the underdog. And we're going to miss you, but I know you'll be out there, and I know the person that's going to replace you, he's just disqualified, and he'll be looking out for the underdog, the poor people and the community, the ratepayers and the employees, the union. Thank you.
I think you started a floodgate open. Lindsey Dale, Imperial County Farm Bureau. Mike, I just want to thank you for your service. You have been just an amazing Director to work with, and I know the farming community felt that they definitely had fantastic representation with you on the Board. So we want to thank you for your service, we want to thank your family, because I know what a sacrifice it is that you've put up with and dealt with, and we want to thank you as well just as much, and his staff and family. But Mike, you will truly be missed, and I know it's not going to be the end working with you, because you're always going to be around, but your generosity, the things that most of the public has no idea that you do, and we just want to thank you for that from the Farm Bureau. Thanks.
On a personal note, in my time of need, my own personal time of need, I want to thank you very much for everything you did, for me and my family. Thank you.
As a mom, I want to thank Michael, and I want to tell him how proud he has made his family. He has truly dedicated himself and has really given a lot of time to all this. He's tried his very, very best, and I think he went above and beyond. We are truly, truly proud of you, Michael, as a family, and love you.
I'd like to say something, it's not on the agenda, but I never, I didn't know Mike until he got elected to the Board, and when he got elected, I was a little bit leery because I didn't know him, and as I got to know him, I got to really like him as a person, and as I learned about his work ethic and how he, what an intelligent person he is, and how he reads everything, and how he asks questions, and how he wanted to learn, and I grew to admire him and to respect him, and I'm really going to miss him. I couldn't ask for a better Board member, and I told him so, and when he told me he wasn't going to run again, I was very angry, because I didn't want to lose him. He's been a very good ally here on this Board as far as energy issues are concerned. I couldn't ask for a better Director. And even though we disagree on some issues, we agree mostly on water issues, I think ninety percent of the time we agree, and the other ten percent, we agree to disagree. And I feel like he's my son. Mrs. Abadi, Mr. Abadi, you've done a wonderful job of rearing this young man. I think he's a wonderful human being, and I thank you for the great job you did, and Carrie, you have a great husband, and I didn't realize your children were so young, no wonder you decided not to run again, they need you. But it's been really a pleasure and an honor to have worked with you, Michael, and I really am going to miss you.
I can't say that I've always taken Mike in the right direction, because he blames me for going the wrong direction, but we flew into the wrong airport, that was the problem. I'd just like to thank Mike. Mike has taken the time, he's been patient with me, and sometimes that's difficult.
Tell me about it.
In all times that he's been on this Board, he's been a gentleman. He's helped me, he's metered me in water issues, things that where he's had tremendous depth, things that I didn't understand, and he's helped me there. When he came on Board, he concentrated on learning the energy side, he has become well-versed, just about to a point of an expert on the energy side, we all look to him for advice on it. Most of all, like Director Mendoza, I met Mike when we were campaigning four years ago, and he has become a very close friend. And I'm not ashamed to tell you, I love him like a brother. And I want to thank his family for loaning to us. He has a young family, it's had to be gut-wrenching on him to have these little ones at home, ballgames, and take the time and give to his community. But I know he's worked hard, and I know that he has moved the IID in an ethical and prudent manner, and I thank him for it.
You want him to say something first? I too want to thank Mike Abadi for the four years of service that he's had on this Board. When Mike first ran his campaign and was going around and campaigning, he believed in agriculture. He came from a very hard-working family, the Abadi's are well-known for the hard work and putting their investments back into the land here into this valley and believing in agriculture. And Mike feels that same way, his whole family feels that way. I know Mike said up at the Hildado Society when he was campaigning that he goes out and talks to the plants, and I can relate to that, and I think anybody that comes from agriculture can relate going out into your field and talking to the plants about what you're doing. And we've had our issues where we don't agree, like Stella says, but Mike put his heart and soul into this job. He always showed up here, came to the meetings, and did what he felt was correct for the IID, the way that he saw it, and I respect him for that. On the energy side, he put a hundred percent into the energy, and I think he was very, very helpful from an energy standpoint. And I think the district is a better place because he's served here for four years. We will miss him, as Mrs. Mendoza says, and he brought very smart intelligence, common sense, and I wish him well in his private life. I know that, as they say, he had a young family, my brother Ralph, when he served, he had a very young family. Takes a toll on the family, so appreciate the fact that he did get to spend the time here, and now he has time to spend with his children, and that's very important. Thank you.
I'll reserve my comments for item number five for Director Abadi. Did you have public comments?
I have a special prayer, but I want to thank all the IID members, Director Abadi, Hanks, Matt Desert, and Minville, and Mendoza, for the donations to give for the scholarship for the kids from Calixico. And I want to thank you guys for the help you gave us, the donations for the scholarship for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will go to the administering of oath.
I could have Director Sanchez and Director Hanks join me, as well as Matt Desert. This is the area report that's known as the well, that seems kind of appropriate for the IID. Gentlemen, please raise your right hands and repeat after me. I, please state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations.
You guys are going to get pinned.
We have to pin them too. And then take your name from the...
What do we start with?
I gave it to Mr. Hanks.
Where did you get them?
Yeah, no problem.
I got a pin, take out your pin. I got a pin.
Is it the same pin?
Yes. But it's Somali.
Same jacket.
I'll get that too. Can you do that? I should do another picture. The thing you're going steady.
Congratulations.
Matt, Matt.
There you go.
No, you're going to put it over there.
You're going to put it inside that. Oops. Jeanette.
It's a little too, it's a little too...
Too technical.
No, it's...
We'll move on to item number five, statements by re-elected and new Directors, as well as the old Directors, the old Directors have, so to speak, any comments? Director Hanks?
I just want to thank the public for the support that they gave me and the confidence of returning me to office. It's a challenge, it's not an easy job, but I feel that the accomplishment that we've made is rewarding, and I look forward to moving things in the direction that we're headed. This is a great organization between the IID and the county. We get things worked out, get things going, can make a big difference in the quality of life for those that live here in Imperial Valley. Thank you.
Do you have any comments?
Yes, I would just, first of all, I again want to thank Director Abadi for his four years of service on this Board. I want to welcome Division One Director Matt Desert, and so looking forward to serving. I think I've got two years to serve with me, you've got four to go, so anyway, welcome to the Board.
Thank you.
We all work together well to try to, as Mr. Hanks says, try to, the IID and the county eventually work together and move the Imperial County and the region forward. I want to welcome Director Hanks back to four more years, he's done an excellent job the last four.
Thank you.
He's very thorough in the things that he does, I think it comes from being involved in that yellow school bus as you talk about, so thank you and looking forward to working with you. And Director Sanchez, welcome back, it's good to have you here, and good luck. And Director Mendoza, appreciate working with you, it's always nice to have a woman telling us men what to do, okay?
She don't listen.
Director Mendoza?
I'd like to again thank Mike Abadi for your four years of service, and Mrs. Abadi, you said you were going to be doing that, and really, this Board is really going to miss you, and I'd like to welcome Mr. Desert to this Board. Look forward to working with you, I don't know you, like I didn't know Mike when he first got elected, and so I look forward to working with you and also with Director Hanks and Director Sanchez. We have a lot of work to do protecting the Valley's water rights and keeping our own balancing authority and moving forward, and making sure the county works with us, and just doing what we need to do to keep the water flowing and keep the lights on, and so we'll just move forward. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank God for my life and the opportunity to serve on this Board. I'd also like to thank the Honorable Judge Yeager and Pastor Walter Colas for participating today in the ceremonies. I'd like to recognize my mother Winnie and the crowd, and my wife Jolene, for all the love and support that has helped me to get through this election process and be successful, as well as the family and all the other friends in the audience, and a special recognition to Mr. Leo Pacheco for his assistance in the city of Calixico on the election efforts. At this time, I'd like to share with you some words out of the strategic plan for the IID that I've came across and the research that I've done, and it's just an upgraded mission statement and an upgraded vision statement, and I think it's important for the Board to hear it as many times as they can and for the audience to hear what we are supposed to do. Says here that the Imperial Irrigation District is a fiscally responsible public agency whose mission it is to provide reliable, efficient, and affordable-priced water and energy service to the communities it serves. In the vision statement for the future, the Imperial Irrigation District will provide, protect its water rights and energy balancing authority, deliver, that's right Stella, deliver the highest level of customer service and maintain system reliability for the sustained benefit of the regional economy, the environment, and the communities it serves in a fiscally responsible manner. In addition to these words, there is also some IID Board operating norms that I think will help us all to move into the future and function, and for the audience that's listening to these words to understand better as to what the intention is and how we're supposed to get there. And these operating Board norms read as follows. One, building a culture of transparency depends on establishing a foundation of trust. Two, no employee, section, or department is an island at the IID. Three, we will only be regarded as credible outside the organization when we are seen as believable within it. And four, we cannot lose as a public agency if we are serving the public good. And finally, five, and Jeanette, you'll appreciate this one, information has no value to the organization unless it is accurate and communicated to others. If it isn't shared, it doesn't exist. Finally, I'd like to thank Mike Abadi myself for his service and for our friendship. I first met Mike Abadi in the first grade at St. Mary's Catholic Church School. We were going to school together. Pastor Walter Colas, I believe you were around there along with your brother Tony. It's been a long time, Michael and I have kept in touch over the years, and kind of lost touch until about four years ago when both our sons were playing in youth soccer, and we had a conversation during the game, and he asked me if I was interested... And four, we cannot lose as a public agency if we are serving the public good. And finally, five, and Jeanette, you'll appreciate this one. Information has no value to the organization unless it is accurate and communicated to others. If it isn't shared, it doesn't exist. Finally, I'd like to thank Mike Abadi, myself, for his service and for our friendship. I first met Mike Abadi in the first grade at St. Mary's Catholic Church School. We were going to school together. Pastor Walter Coles, I believe you were around there along with your brother Tony. It's been a long time. Michael and I have kept in touch over the years, and kind of lost touch until about four years ago, when both our sons were playing in youth soccer, and we had a conversation during the game, and he asked me if I was interested in participating in the Energy Consumer Advisory Committee, and I had no idea what it was, but of course, I said yes. And I tell you, Michael, you've opened up a floodgate of growth for me, for knowledge, information. You've taught me, you've given me on water and power issues, and just self-growth on my own, and I can never thank you enough for that. Michael, you were a rock-solid foundation on this board. You first arrived, and you received much scrutiny and trouble from our local newspaper. I saw up to four articles in one day against you. You stayed solid. You stayed the course. You won over directors, you won over staff, you won over administration, and you impressed us all. Later on, physical ailments almost took you from us. You stayed solid and survived that. I'm thankful for you, Michael. You've added so much to my life, and you'll just never know. And I think we all, Michael, another round of applause for everything he's done.
Thank you, Director Desert. I'd like to thank, well, first of all, I believe that every one of these directors here on this board is here for a purpose and a reason, and as a board director, I hope to fulfill my purpose and my reason for the ratepayers of Imperial County and the trust that the ratepayers, again, put in me to continue to be on this board and the reasons behind it. I hope that they will be fulfilled. As president, I'd like to say a few things. First, I want to offer my personal thanks in that of Director Abadi, who has always said what he meant and meant what he said as a board member. He also voted his conscience, which is what each of us is elected to do. He served the district and the public with distinction and vision, and for that, I want to publicly commend him. I also want to welcome Director Desert. I'm sure there will be times when we disagree on particular issues, but when we do, we won't be in a disagreeable way. All of us are trying to do the people's business, and we will naturally go about it, doing it in our own way, according to the values that we bring us, bring with us to the task. I believe that all of us are trying to get to the same place, which is to serve the public good and move the organization forward. There are difficult issues ahead, and the public will look to this board to place its interest ahead of all others. For my part, I look forward to working with each of you to make that happen. Thank you. We will continue to item number six, the congratulatory public comments only. No one wishes to congratulate us? We will move forward to item number seven.
I just wanted to congratulate Matt and tell you and your family. It's a rough road ahead. It's a lot of time and commitment, but I know he'll do a good job, and I know his heart's in the right place, and I know he has God with him, so congratulations, and congratulations Mr. Hanks and Mr. Sanchez as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kerry.
Callexico and Supervisor-elect, well, I think January 3rd will be the big day, but I too wanted, I was remiss, I apologize to not getting up when the appropriate time was, because my hat is also off to the Abadi family, because how rock-solid can you get? These folks have supported scholarships, and they're just solid as the earth, and just regular people, you know, and they're valley people. They grew up, they went through all the hard knocks, the good times and the bad times, but they've continued to support the valley. And Michael, and Kerry, and Mr. and Mrs. Abadi, I appreciate your family, as solid as you are here in the valley, and your dedication. Thank you very much. And also to the new board, Mr. Desert, congratulations. I don't know you either, but like Stella Mendoza, I'm sure we'll get to know you and love you.
I don't know about love. I'll get to know him.
But I look forward to be a member of the Board of Supervisors, representing District One, and I will be not invisible. I'll be visible, I'll be at your board meetings occasionally, and you can yell at me there, or yell at me over there, and I'll be available, and John Pierre knows me, Mr. Hanks knows me, Stella knows me very well.
I've yelled at you before.
Absolutely, and we're still friends, right?
We are.
No, and we're all gonna be working together as one big family. I'm glad John Pierre mentioned the county, John Pierre, because it's important we all be together in this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oscar Gonzalez, again, I just moved back to the
One, Oscar. And Mr. Renner, we, the board would like to congratulate you on your victory as well. Thank you.
Oscar Gonzalez, Bulldog from Callexico. I moved back to the reservation officially, and I'm glad that I live in Callexico again after 24 years, even though the city's bankrupt, but we're gonna see if we can cure the sick uncle. Again, congratulations to my friend Jim Hanks, Matt Desert. I worked for Matt, and I worked in Jim's campaign, and it was a pleasure. I think I learned a lot from Matt and you, and a lot of the advice that I thought I had. I've been working as an advocate activist for 37 years, but I learned a lot from Matt, and I learned a lot from you, and also Mr. Abadi. And I want to thank Mr. Abadi, the father, because a lot of my relatives worked for you. A lot of my, I know in the 30s, 40s, when you, when all four brothers, I think it was four or five? Four. My aunts, uncles worked for you, and I remember that I did some work, work out in the lettuce. It wasn't too pleasant, and it was cold, but I think that's the reason I studied, because I don't like working out in the field. Thank you very much for Mr. Mandoza, another Bulldog, proud of you, and Mrs. Mendoza, and everybody else. Mr. Sanchez, congratulations, and I hope we can continue to work and continue to work with the administration as a team, because we're here to protect the water and our grandchildren. I want to see that the water's still here, and I don't think my compadre, Tony Ramos, showed up today, but I'm sure that he would have echoed the same thing, so congratulations to the administration, too, Mr. Garber, Brady, Ms. Rivera, and everybody else, because I know they work hard. They wouldn't be here working if, they wouldn't have come to work for Imperial Valley IID if they didn't think it was a great organization, like you articulated, Mr. Hanks. And they've done a good job, I think, basically. We may or may not agree, but
Oscar, congratulatory remarks only, please.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Ben Abadi. I want to thank my son, Mike, for a job well done. He followed my dad's foot trip. He says, when you leave a job, leave it in better shape than when you got it. Thank you.
I want to congratulate all the directors that are sitting, those that were just elected. You have a lot of work ahead of you. You have a house filled with intelligence. It's built on a very strong foundation. Whether it's danger that's coming, you're gonna have to see it coming, or it could be opportunity, but you're gonna have to answer the door. If it's danger, feed its butt back to the street. If it's opportunity, let it in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will have cake and refreshments outside the door.
And Director Abadi requested chocolate or fudge. Do we have chocolate, don't we, Gloria?
No.
No, no, yes.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, thank you.